Been on folly, okay? A bear robbing her cubs is something tough to deal with. And you're dealing with someone that won't ever listen, or they won't, you know, they won't um uh uh. They they got their way of seeing things and they they won't listen and they're always into something. It get to be aggravating. You don't know what you're gonna get. You know, and so these are the things, that's how I see it. King Solomon is making, you know, pretty much making the word practical to us. Of, you know, when you're dealing with this, this is what you're gonna get. So then, anyone wanna um share something on on tonight? Okay, alright, so you know, as we study proverbs and we look at these things, cause you know, it's. There's a lot of contrast of where, you know, um uh where King Solomon speaks. Of something, you know, like, you know. Did, you know, basically speak of something, that's the wrong way of doing it. Then you come out with something that's the right way, and then sometimes it's just a statement. Um, and so as we move along with this, um let us um, you know. Take this in and um, you know, that way we can use it in our everyday living. Because um, when we look at these proverbs and as we go along, we'll see. Things and we'll see people that we deal with, that if we look closely, we'll see. You know, one of these scriptures that we've been dealing with. And it would tell us how to, how we need to handle that situation, or how we need to handle the person, okay? We, anybody wanna say something?
I said you were absolutely right.
Okay, man. Alright, so last week, we stopped at uh verse thirteen. And so what we're gonna do, you know, dealing with evil, will never leave the house. Uh, one who pays back evil for good, you know, so basically that's just um, you know, uh. Someone that really, you know, they don't have the wisdom of God, they don't have the love of people. Um, they just have a selfish, you know, a selfish. Love or selfish way of seeing things of saying, okay, it don't matter about anybody else as long as. I'm happy, as long as I get what I want, it doesn't matter. And so, you know, whenever, you know, even somebody do good, um, you know, here comes evil. They're doing evil back at them, and and basically like you're saying, it's always gonna, that's the way it's always gonna be. It it, you know, it's gonna continue to return until that change. Um, okay, so on tonight, we'll start with fourteen. It says, starting a quarrel, like, starting a quarrel is like breaching a dam. So drop the matter before a dispute breaks out, okay? Alright, so, and as we see. What this is telling us, i- i- you notice what it's saying, starting a quarrel is like breaching the dam. It says, so stop the matter before the dispute breaks out. So he- here's the thing, when we look at um, um, like, when we were talking in verse thirteen. It it, where it says, one who pays back evil for good, so. You got two different um situations here, or or or, you know, people, one who actually um, you know, it's gotta be my way. And then one who actually try to follow God's teaching. So when we look at this, um, he's talking to the person that's trying to um, follow God's way. Okay, because that's who this is gonna mean anything to. If if you're not, you know, if you don't love God and you don't think nothing of God, then. Everything he's saying that is of God is not gonna mean anything to you. Until you realize and and seek God and know who he is. Then when um, they're talking to you about God, it will, you will know exactly um, what what's going on. So where he's saying, starting a quarrel is like breaching the dam, okay, now he's giving us wisdom. Saying, alright now, you know, someone come along, it's like they wanna start arguing.
Right.
And what he's saying is, if you entertain that, it's like breaching the dam. So basically, you know, everything is contained. Now here, someone's trying to put a crack in the dam, and then you entertain that and start, and then the next thing you know. Everything broke loose. And so here, what he's saying is, stop the matter before the dispute breaks out. So, you know, sometimes, okay, alright, okay, it's time to walk away.
Right.
I I'm not gonna entertain that, if that's what you feel and how you believe, okay, it's time to move on. And and and, you know, what he's saying is, if we, if we don't learn uh wisdom in that manner. Then we're gonna run into a situation where something big can be made out of something that was little.
And it tells us, tells us too, uh, teacher, that we should always be walking in the spirit. And not in the flesh, you know, cause the flesh is unruly. You know, it don't come subject to nothing, but if we say that we are citizen of the kingdom of God. We got to walk in the spirit.
Yes.
When you walk in the spirit, you won't fulfill the lust of the flesh.
That's right.
So we have to, you know, we have to walk in the spirit, if we gonna, if we saying that we are citizen of the kingdom of God. Things in our lives have to change, we got to change, you know? And proverbs is letting us know that you must change. You can't have the soul same mentality, you know? You got to have a new mind, your mind got to be renewed. You know, when your mind is renewed, then you're gonna do what the spirit of God lead you to do. So you know that, you know, you're not gonna start, you're just fussing with, you know, fussing with people, and some people do that, cause they like. They messy, they like, you know, chaos, they like that kinda stuff. And a lot of people like that is in the church too. You know, and they're always walking after the things of the flesh. We got to let the flesh know that the flesh cannot come and, you know, and take, take us captive. We have to be alert to the spirit of God. We are, we are flesh and we're spirit, but we have to mind the spirit more than the flesh.
That's right.
So I just wanted to add that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else wanna add something? Okay. Alright, so, and and with this, and and the, and, you know, and as she was saying, you know, we walk with the spirit. Then it lets us know that we got control.
Yes.
You know, we 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 got control, we don't, we don't have to go with every um, you know, the every breeze of the wind. And the Bible talks about that, you know, going to and fro with the with the wind. He says that man is unstable.
Right.
So, but he also talks about being planted by the rivers of water, you know, like a tree planted by the rivers of water. You got a solid foundation, um, so if we're gonna be solid, then we're in control. You know, and as she's saying, some people love mess, some people love getting stuff started. And then if we sit there and we entertain that.
Yeah.
What does that do? Especially when they're looking at us as a leader or as a Christian.
Right.
We're supposed to be, you know, a- and and what we have to understand, if we're a Christian, we're a leader. Cause we're supposed to be leading people to Christ, we're a leader. So when they look at that and they say, oh, you know, they're saying they're Christians and they falling for this. See, that's the trick of the enemy, to use against people to keep them from coming to God.
Right, absolutely.
And we supposed to have, we supposed to be in control enough that we can see that, and as she said, with the Holy Spirit, we will be able to see that. Okay? Alright, if nobody don't have anything on thirteen, I meant fourteen, we'll go on to fifteen. Acquitting the guilty and condemning the innocent, the Lord detests them both. See? And 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 this is the things that we see, um, especially, we see especially today. Um, people haven't done anything, but yet they're being punished. And people that's doing things and they're being, it's being looked over. You see, and those are saying, you're saying God detests both of it. Um, so what we have to do, you know, what what we have to do is. You know, we have to focus and try to do what's right inside of God. You know, we can't be um, and and basically, um, like. We're trying to turn a blind eye to some things that shouldn't happen. You know, so for example, if um, um, you know, we are Christians and we're dealing with other Christians. And they're talking about people, or but, you know, backstabbing on people, and we knew it.
Uh huh.
We're not supposed to turn uh back to that, or we're not supposed to entertain that. We're supposed to conduct that and deal with that.
Amen.
They, and 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 and, you know, and like condemning the innocent, you know, sometimes. Um, how, um, you know, get talking about people, some things that. Where they're accused of, and we don't even know if it's true or not.
Right.
You know, and then we wanna put them in hell already.
Right.
I don't like that.
Amen. And you don't know the situation, sometimes you don't know the situation, you start talking, just like you said, start talking about it, but you wasn't there. So how you gonna talk about, you know, something that you wasn't, you know, you wasn't there to see what went on?
That's right.
You know, and you're always giving your opinion, but you're giving a negative opinion because you was not there. You know, and if we are, if we are not there, then we don't know what went on. We don't know what went on, you know, so we have to be careful about that. Given your opinion and and it's something that, you know, you was not there to see what what really happened.
That's right.
And I wanna read Exodus, uh, twenty-three and seven says. Be sure never to charge anyone falsely with evil. Never sentence an innocent or blameless person to death. For I never declare a guilty person to be innocent. So we as Christians don't never charge anybody falsely with evil. You know, and you don't, really don't know the person, and you saying all kinda stuff about them, you know? We don't supposed to do that, we don't supposed to do it, sometime we do it. But the proverbs is teaching us the right way. How to go about, you know, different situation that comes up.
That's right.
And and never declare a guilty person to be innocent. If that person is guilty, don't say, well, I believe they're innocent, and you don't know, you don't know nothing. You know, you're just assuming, and we can't assume, we got to know the facts, you know? In a, in a, in a, um, in a courtroom, you can't bring hearsay in a courtroom. You got to have documentation, you got to know what you're talking about. And if you wasn't there, you can't talk on the witness stand, cause you wasn't there. Well, I just wanted to add that.
Oh, I need just attach, cause it's only eighteen percent.
Okay, okay, Donna, will you say something? Okay?
Oh, I, it it was by accident, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Alright, so anybody else have anything they wanna add to that? So the thing that, when we look at this is, this, um, you know, there's a, there's, you know, the the. Uh, the ten commandments, um, thou shall not bear false witness against thy neighbor, right? So just fall in line with that, so you see, as I said earlier, um, um. Proverbs is kinda like, this is what it looks like. You know, you, we got the ten, we got the two great commandments, and we got the teachings of Paul and all this. And 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 when we look at um, proverbs, you you know, basically saying, this is what it looks like. So, you know, we wanna, um, you know, acquitting the guilty, condemning the innocent, okay? It says the Lord detests them both, that's fall right in line on the ten of thou shall not bear false witness. And so, um, it's it's teaching us how to treat one another, how to live with people. And if we can get these down, um, you know, this is what makes the Christians. Different from everybody else, because it'll be that person that start trying to always start something. You know, the Christian is, okay, and they 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 basically backing down and moving away from that. And so when other people look, they were saying, you know how we do it, I wouldn't take that out of you, you know? Because what that does is, that caters to your ego of saying, you're lesser than a per- you're lesser than. Because you took that, and what they're trying to say is, you can't let them think that you're lesser than. You gotta, they gotta say that you're greater, no, it doesn't matter, because that's pride.
Right.
If I gotta prove that I'm greater than you, that's pride.
Right, and so in spirit of discord among the brotherly. That's the thing, we don't, we don't, we don't supposed to do that, you know? So in discord.
Amen.
Among the brotherly. We got to be, we got to really, we got to really demonstrate love. We got to demonstrate love, you know, and not in the way that we understand love. But we have to demonstrate love in the way that the Holy Spirit is showing us how to love. Cause you know, our love got a lot of stuff in it.
That's right.
Ah, right, that's right, our love is not pure like the love of Jesus. So, you know, we have to, um. We have to demonstrate real love, real love, look beyond the fault and see the need, you know? Real love honors, real love forget, you know, real love is there for that individual. So our love have to be real, we can't just talk love and gotta live love. But the love of Jesus must permeate out of us. Where somebody can say, oh, that person got the love of God in their hearts. So, we just have to have his love in our hearts, you know, and we can't be playing with this. This is real stuff here, you know, we talking about real life. So we just have to accept what the Holy Spirit is telling us, and let's move on and do what God called us to do. Cause we ain't here to please ourselves, we are here on an assignment. You know, and we have to, we have to get our orders from the king. Just like Jesus got his orders from God. So we got to get our orders from him, that's why we have to stay, you know, stay in prayer, stay in your Bible, you know? And then if you do like that, then you won't be carnal minded. You know, you see carnal minded people, you know, and we don't wanna be carnal minded, we wanna be spiritual minded.
That's right.
Amen.
Amen, okay? Um, alright, so we, uh, verse, um, sixteen. Why should fools have money in hand to buy wisdom when they are not able to understand it? Alright, so, class, anybody wanna um, start discussion on this, on this verse? Alright, so here. You know, this right here goes in line with when Jesus said, don't cash your prayers before swine.
Yes.
They, cause they say that all they're gonna do is tr- trample it into the mud, because they don't understand what they have.
Right, absolutely.
So here he's saying, now. First of all, you know, this is, this is kinda like, I I guess you would say like a a a analogy, or this is a. You know, he's just making the point here, because um, you know, even if you do have money. Um, you can't buy wisdom, but what he's trying to say is, if you got something of value. You know, why trade something of value, or, you know, he he just trying to make a point of just saying. That, you know, why go through this extreme, you know, you put this into that. For, you know, fools, get wisdom, and they're not gonna understand it, just like Jesus when he said, prayers before swine. The prayers are something of value, and all the swine gonna do is trample it in dirt, ruin it.
That's right.
Here, um, is basically, is 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 um, King Solomon's version of it. That, you know, why, why, why should it, why should it have it? They're not gonna understand it when they get it, because see, the thing is, um. We have to know God. We have to know God, so once we know God, then we'll understand wisdom. We understand his wisdom.
Amen.
See, because, um, you can give the best advice, and then when it's wisdom from God. The people that don't know him is gonna say it's foolishness.
That's right.
But it's not. And though God's wisdom, just like we just said up earlier, when we start, um, where was it? Alright, um, well, starting a quarrel is like breaching the dam. Okay, it says acquitting the guilty and condemning the innocent, the Lord detests them both. So now, when we look at society today, and we look at things today, especially in politics. Um, if you're trying to, you know, you're actually, we're actually seeing that looks like you're gaining. By not telling the truth, you're gaining by, you know, putting down others.
Right.
So. When, when you look at it from a world standpoint, see, the world wouldn't understand this, they call it foolishness. So we gotta know God to, first of all, before we can understand the wisdom. Okay, so why waste the money? It's King Solomon saying, as Jesus was saying, why waste the pearls? Okay, anybody wanna add something?
And today they're calling good, evil, and evil, good.
That's right.
That's what they're doing today in the world, you know? And sometime in uh, in the church too, they, they calling it good, evil good, but it's not good.
That's right.
It's not good, and we have to have discerning of spirit, we got to discern spirits. You know, cause we fighting every, each and every day, we fighting a demonic force that is coming against us. And want us to fail, but God didn't put the church here to be defeated. We are the church of the living God, and we will not be defeated. So that's, this is why the word of God is coming to us to take it in, live by it. You know, manifest it in your life, and let it bring forth, let it bring forth fruit, some thirty, some sixty. Some a hundredfold in your life.
That's right.
God is doing everything, the Holy Spirit, not God, but the Holy Spirit is doing everything to teach us. The ways of Christ, cause we don't know, you know, and we can't assume. You know, we assuming that that's Christ, no, you must know. If this is him or not, you know, because challenges is gonna come in our lives, you know?
That's right.
And it's gonna see, you know, where we are, did we build our house on sand? Or did we build it on rocks?
That's right.
You know, so, you know, and if you build it on sand, I'm sorry, it's gonna, it's gonna collapse. If you build it on straw, it's gonna collapse wood, the only thing that will stand is the solid rock. And Jesus is what, our cornerstone, he is our rock.
Yes.
So that's how we got to build our lives on, on Jesus.
Amen, okay, thank you for that. And also, while you were speaking it, one of the things I um, see here too is. Um, when we start talking about, you know, the money, you do, you know, fools buying buying wisdom. I I, you know, how, um, you got certain, you know, how how the, um. You have like the rich making big donations to churches. And then sometimes, you know, i- you 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 see some of the things that you heard them. Teaching on and preaching on change.
Right.
You know, so churches have to be careful. That, hey, yeah, you you gonna make this big donation, or you gonna build this wing on the church? But God's word is still God's word, and if you don't wanna set God's word, then keep the money.
Amen.
That's, that's where churches gotta stand firm on too. You can't, because they uh come and build a wing on, or, you know, pay off the church debt. That don't make the, um, you know, the churches are not supposed to substitute God's word for theirs. It always supposed to be God's word.
Yes.
And 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 if the thing that God says makes them wrong, then we have to communicate that to them, you're wrong. And this is how we have to fix it, um, and so, you know, I I kinda see that in their tooth, um.
Oh, yeah.
I got it right then.
Pretty good job there.
If you look, if you even looking at that, what you're saying about, if they don't stay focused on God's word and stay focused on God's foundation. They will get off their base and look at things as they read, and and takes away what God already got in place for the others to do. Because they're gonna do it the opposite way, and so that's, that's the reason why we have to, like I say, have to. Be about God and his foundation and stay into his word. And 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 let that word manifest in us, that we'll be able to grow to help each other, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Because they let it over cover them, and they they tough away from God, but they looking at the thing that. Like I say, the money out to get in the way, the big number, like you said, the best, then that gonna throw them off, but then if they. Give God and stay in the presence of God, and follow his command, say, oh, my kids, the Holy Spirit. And the Holy Spirit gonna nag you and let you know when it's wrong. And the only thing is, sometime I think they overwhelmed, because the thing about it, if you let stuff overwhelm us and not look. Still stay focused on God, you're gonna, you're gonna take over. You're gonna take over and do, it gonna manifest, and then we gonna lose, and sometime when it come to that place. Where we staying in that little mold too long, then God not gonna step in every, us at the time, because he gonna let you go through. With that thing, make that change again, or or the country reality and know that you fail on that side.
Oh, yes, amen, thank you. Okay, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with her. And uh, we have to uh, have an understanding, I guess, that. You know, like a lot of those uh, self-help books out there that they have. Shelf after shelf after shelf, I mean, they're really, they're borrowing from proverbs, they're borrowing, but they're watering it down too. Repackaged it. You know, that's, that's selling the wisdom, the, the wisdom, um, God freely gives, you know? It's, it's a free gift. Jesus is a free gift, not that he bought it price. So, you know, um, and thankfully so. Cause what he did is priceless. And wisdom is more valuable than pearls and gold, finest gold. So, you know, to repackage something that that got already perfected. That's folly to me.
Okay.
So it's already written, and the Bible is a book of love letters, right? It, it talks about his love for us, and uh. So you can't build on that, I mean, you can't change it, because it's already perfect. The Bible is already perfect, the way that it, that it's put out, it's put it out for us. It's a gift, and we have a choice to receive or not receive. But in our time, and when you see somebody that uh. At one point in time, you know, they may uh. Be caught up in this and that, but eventually, they're gonna have an understanding that. Proverbs is written for a reason, so that we can go back and uh. Focus where the focus needs to be.
Right. Okay, alright, thank you. If if, Vince, I'll get you, let me, I wanna add on something, you know, with what Scott's saying. Um, um, and you know, he may mention about how, um, they're taking, you know, God's word, you know, and repackages in book. The one thing about that, you know, when Jesus made, um, was talking to his disciples. About, um, you know, speaking in parables, so that, you know, cause you know, the people that don't believe. They've, they, they, um, you know, they can see and not understand. They've, they, they um, you know, they can see and not understand. Okay, so that's what happens. And seeing God's wisdom, with God's wisdom, you know. The Holy Spirit, when we read something, we get the understanding God wants us to get from that. So, you know, it it, when we try to translate it literally what it's saying. It might be saying one thing and we, you know, we might think it's saying one thing and we think we got it. But when we, when the Holy Spirit kicks in and we see something, you know, in that scripture, it's kinda like, you know. Somebody that don't believe would be like, well, where'd they get that from? And so, you know, that's, that's where um you were going there too, right Scott, about um being watered down. So, we gotta have God's Holy Spirit to gain everything he want us to get. And also, once we do that, then we gain full benefit of what he want us to get. And so, um with that, a lot of times what we're doing is. In the church, we're trying to read and we're trying to study God's word without the Holy Spirit. That's right, it's not gonna work. And so that's why we don't have the power that God say we should have.
Absolutely.
Because we're doing it on our own versus bringing God in. Okay, thank you for that, Scott, that's that.
You're welcome.
Vince?
Yeah, what, I I just wanted to add to that too. Cuz I I look at, I'm looking at this, this word and and applying it to our practical sense. Of um because that's, that's what we get caught up so much is the practical. Where this is a spiritual lesson for us to. To allow us to not let our practical sense get in our way. But our practical sense, and and you hear this when we're. And and it's just interesting cuz this conversation came up uh with me yesterday. When we talk about. The things of today in politics and so on and so forth, of how um the word is used. Um, like you said, they're using some of God's word. In their idea to get people on one side versus the other. You're getting followers from here because the more following that they can have, the more power they feel, they they feel they have. So, you know, even church, as you even said, even Christians are following that path. And 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 churches are following that path of being on this side. For whatever practical sense to them they think it make, financial. Um, being able to have favor, to do certain things in the church and all that. And then they start tainting God's word and his interpretations for their purpose. And so, it's interesting how when you you're saying the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit, as we tap into that. We get to learn how we are moving or could be moving away from Christ. And following some of those same practical practices. But staying in his word keeps us aligned. But again, it's uncomfortable for people because they, it doesn't match the world or practical sense. Cuz you know, the world is saying these things are practical, to be, you know, you know. We, we, we need free, we, certain people need freedom, certain people need privileges, certain people, certain people, all people. So when we start dealing with that and siding with that, we start losing sight. And I see proverbs is getting us, you know, back to the sense of understanding our spiritual. Guidance on all things as we stay with the word. And 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 because, cuz look, that money thing. And and it it might not be riches, it just might be, you know, you need enough money so you can have privileges. You need enough money so you can be in the group with other people. You need, you need, you know, this money thing, that becomes that God. And when it says you don't need, you know, just having insight is more valuable than money. Having the knowledge that you know how God's gonna lead your life, lead your life, that he's covering you. Is 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 better than any kinda uh money, uh privilege, alliance, or anything of that nature. And and that's, that's the, that's the seriousness of what we're dealing with today. Because we're getting into a situation, and this, our, our, our nation is going through a situation where. We have, you know, political promises. And now it's come down to families to say, oh, I understand what they're saying about this group of people or that group of people. We're getting so disjointed by that, where, you know, resources will be taken away from people. And all people, more than what people realize. So when we start seeing this, how, what kind of responsibility as Christians do we have? To stand up, maneuver, teach, guide, share with one another. That there are ways for them to, for people to protect themselves, there are also ways to share resources with individuals. We're gonna have, as Christians, we're gonna have to take a bigger role in showing God's love to people. Because this practical sense that we're getting isn't there. And like you said, some of the churches are even teaching against that.
Alright, anybody else wanna add some? Okay. Alright, well, we'll move on. Verse seventeen, a friend loves at all times, and a brother is born for a time of adversity. Alright, um class, anybody wanna start discussion there? Um Scott?
Well, I, I, I was just gonna go back to the other, you know, talking about, you know, pearls before swine. What, what makes a pearl valuable, right? God made it, that's what makes it valuable. What makes gold valuable? God made it, that's what makes it valuable. About wisdom, God made wisdom. That's what makes it valuable. We have to look where the value is, and people that don't see value in anything. They're not gonna get it. So. Pearls before swine, they're not gonna see any value in. It has to come from an understanding that pearls come from God. That's still, and the Bible comes from God. And wisdom comes from God. And. Everything that we uh experience. That's part of God working their story through us, though. That's the beauty of of what we're doing when we're doing our daily walk.
Okay, amen. Alright, thank you, thank you, Scott. Alright. Okay, alright, anybody wanna um add something there or or talk about the verse seventeen? If friend loves at all time. If it's a friend, you know, it says love at all time. So, that's telling me that regardless of what you going through. That for, that friend is somebody that's there, you know, is um, they're there with you. You know, when things going bad, when things going good, um they're there, you know, if you um. If you um wrong, they're there to help you get, to help you get it together. You know, when they, when you right, they're there to help you stay right. So, all times it says, a friend. Loves at all times, regardless of situation. And then see, and then when it goes here, it says that a brother is born for a time of adversity. It talks about, you know, it moves into dealing with families. Basically, your, you know, families are there for you, especially during cert, during adversities. Um, normally, you know, when you have a good family, a strong family, you can always call on your family. Um, that's the expectation comes as family. Now, without this wisdom from God. What's happening to families is, especially when um a patriarch passes. And now you got an inheritance to deal with. Lot of families break up. And so, what we have to do, you know, as we gain God's wisdom and God's understanding. We have to know that this family tie is stronger than whatever the possessions are. And 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 first of all, we, we, you know, as Christians, we can't get ourselves so caught up in wanting possessions. That we're willing to risk um love for other people for it. And 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 we see it happens, we see it happen in the church, um and and that is, that is um not of God. Okay, because the one thing that we have to remember. Is when we come in this world, we didn't bring anything. We go out, we're not gonna take anything. So, everything in the middle is not, you know, we, we have to understand everything in the middle. Especially when we become Christians is gotta be about, it's gotta be about God, it's gotta be about his teachings. In order for us to have an expectation to spend eternity with him. We can't get so caught up in wanting these worldly things and then think that we're gonna be able to spend eternity with God. Because the world, God is basically, um, you know, you could say it on opposite ends of the spectrum. Those God way is so much better, so much different from the world's way. The things that we think of, when we think it from a world perspective, that is of value, is not of any value when it comes to God. Okay? And so, here, we gotta understand, we're gonna be a friend. We gotta love at all times. There's some times where we gotta drop our pride so we can love our friends. There comes some times where we gotta, you know, bring ourselves uh down a level so that we can show love. We could be a friend and show love to someone. And then we also have to remember that, um, you remember, and 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 we talking a family, you know. And a brother's born for a time of adversity. You remember um the story of Esther, right? And the thing that her uncle told her, said, well, maybe you were put here for times such as this. God put us in place for a purpose. Alright, anybody wanna add something?
A friend is always loyal. And we know that uh God call us no more servant, but he called us friend. And he is loyal, he is loyal to his people. So we have to be loyal to one another, just like Jonathan was loyal to David. Ruth was loyal to Naomi, so Jesus was loyal to God. And he is loyal to us, whatever he says in his word. His word don't fall to the ground. His word is yea and amen to the end. And he's the same God yesterday, today, and forevermore. He don't change. So he is loyal, he is loyal, and he is our example and showing us how to be loyal. And he went through, you know, he went through a cruel death to stay loyal to us, to the church. He loved the church so much, my God. Hallelujah, that he gave everything. He gave up everything. He came from glory. Put on this flesh and walked among us, taught us, you know? So he is loyal, he is our prime example. He is loyal, and if we say that we are his children, we got to also be loyal. You know, we can't get behind one another back and be talking about one another, saying different things, you know. About uh things that you don't like, when God is trying to help you. You don't like it cuz God's trying to help you, okay? He wants you to be that person that he call you to be. So a lot of times, things gonna come and it's gonna hurt, you know? But he is loyal, he is loyal to us, and we can look at him, we can look at his life. His life was a demonstration to the world that he is loyal, and he's loyal to all humanity. He died for our sins, my God. You can't get no more loyal than that.
That's right.
So he is a friend, he's a friend, and if we say that we are friend to one another. We, 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 we got to demonstrate that. We have to demonstrate that we are friend. We can be, you know, sometime people in the churches, they cause confusion, they talking about one and. You know, I say this one, that, and that one, this, we can't be like that. You know, cuz we fighting a real devil, so we got to be what? On one accord. We got to have the unity in the body of Christ. And when we're un unified together, then we got what? Strength. And the enemy can't come in and and devour the sheep or devour devour the new believers because what? We are on the wall, we saying the same thing, we talking like Jesus, we doing like Jesus. Glory to God, hallelujah. Not one of his disciples was lost, not but one. And that was um Judas Iscariot. That was taking the money.
He was a thief.
Yes, but the other ones went on and they fulfilled the will of God for their lives. And it says, and a brother is born to help in a time of need. You see your sister and your brother in a time of need, you know, don't hold back yourself, don't hold back. And sometime the Holy Spirit will talk, speak to you. And say, well, this one need that. Say, well, I ain't got it. You're talking to God, cuz he knows in your pocket, okay, in in your bank account. And he's, you know, it could be a, a, a single mother that's going through with her children, you know? And we supposed to be concerned about one another. This ain't something that we just talking now and discussing, we got to be about it.
That's right.
It ain't nothing to it but to do it. Because he called us to be doers and not just heirs only. And what we're getting tonight is so powerful and so wonderful, but what's gonna make it real? What's gonna make it real? It's gonna make it real when we manifest the character. Of the Holy Spirit in our lives. Praise the Lord.
I was gonna say the same thing she was saying, but I tell you, that's a true, that's a true word because I tell you. It's like this, what we have to manifest, it's manifest that what God showed us in his light and our doing. And and the thing about it too, like you said, sometimes even though we that, we have to stay under his courage. But stay in the real of his real and in his word. When the Holy Spirit come and he send that Holy Spirit to comfort you, he'll send that Holy Spirit to comfort you too. And you, the Holy Spirit, so that the Holy Spirit will let you know. And so the thing about it, when we, we get a thing and if he'll show you how to love, even though sometime. When you committed to the thing that he tells you in life, you committed to a friend and showing commitment just like you were. And being obedient to his Holy Spirit. I I was just listening at where she was. Because see, I see the changes in my life, where his Holy Spirit speak to me and let me know. I don't care how people treat you or how they do you, treat them with the unconditional love that God got in you. So that it won't backfall on you because you doing what God asked you to do. To go through them ups and to help you to love, even though they do you wrong, though they say something that hurt your feeling. But you still show that love because what? God got everything else covered. He is the true foundation that we should anchor ourselves onto. And 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 like I say, when she begin to talk, it's something just running all over me because. I understand that God put, like I say, he put us here for a season of time. He put everybody in a different mood for a different thing to help each other. Connected to God's word, but stay on his telescope, uh the foundation that he got in order to bring out the church.
Okay, anybody else wanna add something? Okay, if not, um we're gonna look at um. Let's look at eighteen, says, one who has no sense shake hands and pledge and puts up security for a neighbor. Okay, alright, so we we talked about this um in in a couple earlier chapters. And so basically, you you know, it's back at the situation of co-signing. Um, you know, and and overextending yourself. And it's, and he basically saying, one who has no sense, this is what they do. Okay, alright, so. There's nowhere where God asked. Or or define even a friend or brother as someone who do does this, okay? So that's why he says they have no sense, because um you know, if it's a situation where you have to. You know, um. Do this for a neighbor or. Then what did they do to get in the situation they're in? Okay, so we could get in a position where we're fueling or we're um supporting bad habits that someone else had.
That's right.
See, we have to be careful and we have to be discerning.
Yes.
And okay, uh no, this is not what you need.
Amen.
You know, it it what what was it that uh when Peter and John was going into the temple? And he said it was a man they brought there daily, and he laid it at the gate begging for arms or begging for money? Okay, now, you know, one thing about that story that, you know, we 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 gotta understand is. That if they brought him there daily, that mean he was there when Jesus was coming along. Okay, but Jesus didn't heal him. See, that's because he, everything's got its time and it's got its place. But this got its place, I believe, in part is so that there's some teaching for us. So whenever, you know, he was begging for money from Peter and John, you know, they were like, whoa. Um, silver and gold have I none. You know, or in other words, you don't need money. Because if I give you money, you're gonna be right back here tomorrow begging for more.
Right.
You know, if I give you money, it's just gonna be temporary.
Amen.
So what I need to give you, and this is wisdom. I'm gonna give you something that's gonna make you leap and jump for joy and praise God. And that's what he says, in the name of Jesus, rise up and walk. Now, you went from being begging for money, now you're substantial that you can stand on your own two feet.
Yes.
And see, and that's what happens, you know, sometimes when we try to, you know, a lot, you know, we we think we're doing good. And we handing out money. Sometimes we're hurting them more so than we are helping them. And we have to be careful and we have to be discerning in dealing with that. Okay? We have to give them something that's gonna um carry them through, not just for the next meal.
Right.
But it's gonna take from actually eternity, okay?
So that's saying, say, if you teach a man. Um, if you give a man a fish, he'll eat for a day. But if you teach him for, teach him how to fish, he'll eat for a lifetime, right?
That's right.
That's if you catch any fish.
Jesus there. He'll tell him to throw his net on the right side.
Amen. Amen, that is right. Okay, anybody wanna add something? Okay.
No, that's a powerful word, um, but uh Jesus Christ. Naz. That, that word is so powerful to you could say it to anything in a need, and it'll happen right away. I experienced that one time. I I was uh driving my car, it was raining, and the wind wouldn't go up. And I said, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazus, go up, well, then it went true. I didn't say Jesus, I said Jesus. And that wind, it went up, but I got, I didn't get wet no more.
Scott, Don?
It's me this time. Um, I don't know, I was just, I was thinking of um, you know, the woman at the well. And um, and and Jesus said to her, um, that I'll give you, you know, water that you'll. You'll never be thirsty, you know? She was looking for something physical, you know? She wasn't, she was kinda isolated by herself in the middle of the day and. Jesus came to her and knew exactly what she needed, you know, he knows what we need, right? Before we need it, of course, we need him. We need him more than anything, more than. Any material thing, any, any riches, anything in the whole wide world can never. Not another person, not nobody, can compare to Jesus. So we want us, and what we do today. Is for eternity. You know, what what you're praying today, you know, when you're praying in the spirit, and you're praying to spend time with the Lord. You're praying today for for tomorrow, you're praying for other generations, you know? You're, you know, because Jesus want, what he wants, like that woman, he wanted her to know how much she was loved. And that's what she needed, because she was searching for love in all the wrong places, you know? Like a lot, like a lot of us have done, you know? Looking for idols and not realizing, you know? Being foolish, you know, but but then he gave her the right answer and he told her what she needed. And then she went and out and evangelized, you know, and and when we find Jesus. We need to stay hungry for him every day. Hungry and hungry, and go out and preach the good news. That's what did he tell the disciples before he left? You know, that the Holy Spirit was gonna come upon them, and then that's gonna empower them, and that they would go at into all the world and preach. The good news, good news. People need to hear the truth. They need that more than riches. They need that more than anything, right? Right? I mean, like, you can, you can give people, cause more, like you say, you can ca- cause more damage by giving them. What they don't need, what what would be a snare to them, a snag to them, and, you know, not teach them wisdom. You know, sometimes people need to learn, when you speak truth to them, and say, you know, I can't. Give you, put up money for you that way, you know, because that's not gonna help you. But, you know, I can uh help you financially by laying out some guidelines for you and telling you. What can help you build up to this and get you out of this mess, you know, and and show them how. To get out of what the mess they cause. I can show you that if you're willing to listen to wisdom. But if you don't wanna listen, I can't help you.
And to pray.
And to pray, you know, and show them that Jesus is the answer, and he needs to learn, you got in this mess because he's not your source. You're not relying on him, you know? Jesus needs to be your source of everything.
Everything.
You know, it's not, it's not just your job. Is your source. You might make money at a job, but that, you know. I tell you, he's, he's gone above and beyond any job I've ever had, any business I've ever had, anything. Because a lot of times, it didn't come from that too. You you know what I mean? Because it came in ways I I at least expected it. You know, you have to trust in him, you know, like when you're struggling or going through anything, you have to say, you know, I mean. Your struggle could be financially, it could be not financially, but whatever it is, you have to say, Jesus, I trust you. Jesus, I trust you because you're my source, you're my everything. See, he he wants the us to be. You know, to come to him, and, you know, he wants to be our everything, you know? And and he's the door, so like every decision we make. Needs to be come through Jesus. We have to, we have to wait on him. You know, don't, you don't step out and run ahead of him, because he doesn't like that. Because when we do, um, we're gonna make these wrong decisions, as it says in Proverbs, we, then we'll turn into the fool real quick. You know, we don't wanna be a, you know, a fool, you know, when we don't have to be, right?
That's right, amen.
Because I've been a fool for too long, like, and I I I don't want to continue, I want to, you know. We should be growing in the wisdom, right?
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Brother teacher?
Yes.
Um, hope everybody's doing well. We are on the road, but I just wanted to mention that in 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 general. When we look at these proverbs, I I guess I wanna put it out here for discussion. Does anybody see or agree? That using the proverbs. Helps us to be better disciples in the men's. We don't learn leadership. And that doesn't make us good disciples.
That's right.
You know, and it certainly doesn't make good and advantageous, because um. What I'm seeing. You know, breaking up?
Right.
Is, you know, I'm seeing the tweets that are developing us, you know, that this. So we can be in position to develop others.
Amen.
Amen.
That's a true saying that, Pat.
Yes.
Amen.
Alright, anybody else wanna add something? Alright, so.
Well, with that teacher, brother teacher, just just expound on that just for a little bit. I know you're getting ready to wrap it up. But the 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 thing is, a lot, a lot of times, and and this is just my observation. Is that a lot of folks i- in the church, now, we're talking about in the church. It seems like, you know, I can make decisions on my own. And 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 I'm 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 grown, I can come and go as I please, and I can do this sometimes, and then I can do this other thing sometimes. But I think it's a lack of understanding that there's a difference between the church and the church building.
Come on, Pat.
Yes, yes.
And so, yeah, the church might be there, but if you're not there, the church, you know, the church building might be there, but if you, when you walk out, the church is gone. Inconsistent on your post, if you're, if we're inconsistent on our study, if we're inconsistent on our love. Then it shows it is actually, we're the body of Christ.
That's right.
And and so, you know, if if you're making bad financial decisions and that kind of stuff, and it shows up in your praise. Because you can't have praise. You know, and you know, you you are a member of a church and you're not a tither.
Stay home.
Yeah, you know, there are folk who say, well, you know, I I'll, you know, it's like you God's gift to. You know, like you God's gift when you show up. And it's tough, and and that you don't have to go to church. You know, people got where they know, I ain't got to go to church. There was some folk who I picked up the other night, took them. And and this lady keep saying, she said, um, you know, and they were looking for a house and this and that, and how they fell on bad time. And I asked them, I said, you are the church body. She said, oh, no, you can praise God anywhere. And I said, you got part of that right. I said, but the Bible says to forsake yourselves not to assemble, to assemble one another. That's what the Bible says. I said, I hear what you saying. I said, but if you were in a, in a church, you might not be homeless right now. I said, because there there's power, and you said it earlier, there's power in us coming together.
Yes.
When the church comes together, the church can do anything.
That's right.
And so that's, that, and I, so I said, you know, the deal is, I said, and she was like, well, yeah, you can do this, and that's one way of thinking about it. I said, well, think about this, the church giving you a ride when you ain't got a ride. And I I said, I could take you to Chabber, and I could put you out on this corner, and the church will have put you out. I said, you know, and I said, I hate to be be that straight up, but we have to be straight up with people, and I don't be foolish. And 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 saying stuff off the top of your head, when the Bible says you the joint for y'all, that that we are more powerful. When we're together. It says it in several places. So I'm just saying is that we have to have this wisdom and we have to have the scripture. So when folks are out here talking about foolishness, that they done heard somebody else say. You know, or they, they're, are they using some kind of reasoning, like, well, that sounds about right. And, you know, and I like, no, uh, the 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 most dangerous thing is a lie with a little truth in it. Or truth with a little lie in it. Yeah, yeah, ha- you know, yes, indeed, a part, you know, a partial truth is a whole lie. And and so that's what's where people are getting in, um, you know, caught up in, is that they won't, we won't, we won't spend time with these proverbs. So that we can cut through that junk that people make up. And then we have these, now we got a church that has power. And so, and why would we have a church without power? That's not even God's church without power.
Amen.
Thank you for that, Pat.
Yeah, thank you for that. Alright, anybody else got something? Somebody wanna add something to that?
I just wanna say, um. To learn, you must love discipline. It is stupid to hate correction.
Oh, my Lord.
So to learn, you must love discipline. And this is what the word of God in the book of Proverbs is showing us. You know, the ways of God, and there's two ways here, wisdom and foolishness.
Right.
You know, and you can choose which way you gonna go. And God is not gonna make you choose the way of wisdom. You know, or choose the way of foolishness. But when we hear the word of God and it's bringing truth to our lives to help us to change. We, we need to choose wisdom, you know, and be like that little child in Matthew eighteen and three. Be like that little child, you know? If you wanna go to the, if you wanna go into the kingdom of God, you got to be like what? A little child. You got to be like that, you know, it's when, when, when correction is coming, discipline is coming. We got to take that in because it's gonna help us. God know what we need. He knows what we need. He know what it's gonna take for me, Mona Lisa. Because sometime I'm, you know, I'm hard-headed sometime, and I wanna do what I wanna do. You know, but it it can work my way. It can work my way. It got to be the wa- the ways of God, got to be his way or our way. So I have to take in what he's, he's giving me. Because, you know, we, there's people out here that we have to minister to. You know, and we got to know what we talking about.
That's right.
You know, we can't be going around saying the wrong thing and leading people astray. We must say what the word of God say. You know, get rid of your theology and your philosophy. Let's stick to the word. You know, get rid of your theology and your philosophy, let's stick to the word, when we stick to the word, the word is the thing that draws a man or a woman to Christ. So that's what we have to do, stick to what God is saying. We's got to be imitators of him, we got to say what he say and do what he have done. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, anybody else wanna add something? Okay, so, you know, as we study these proverbs, and you know, we keep these comments in mind, it'd be, you know, cause the proverbs is, is, is trying to get us in position, um, so that we can receive and understand God's wisdom, so that we can be the church that draws. Because when everybody else look around and see us, they see something different from what the world's doing. You know, it is, if, if the world is, um, idolizing, um, lies and, um, you know, idolizing, tearing people down, then the church need to be telling the truth and building people up.
That's right.
So, you know, we're different, and, um, in doing that, then we're gonna draw, we're gonna draw, because we showing love, we're showing compassion, but if we don't have any love or any compassion, um, we, we, yeah, just the social love.
Amen. And some churches.
Tell the truth.
And so, um, and so with this, if nobody else have anything, um, we're gonna stop right here, that's a verse, um, nineteen, and we'll start on verse twenty on next week. You, you know, reread and read, and then we'll, um, come together, have discussions. And perhaps, I don't know if you're in position or.
Go ahead and, uh, we appreciate the lesson, um, we were, had to do a visitation, we're in between visitations here, uh, visits, but, um, yeah, please go ahead and, um, and give your petitions, we appreciate the instruction and the discussion, all of the teachers. And so, but this is a time when we get a chance to really flex our power. Uh, you know, this is when we get to say that, you know, we get to speak those things that are not as though they were. We get to call on God and ask him to dispatch angels, and we get the calls, uh, to be, uh, co-collaborators in the continuum of creation, I like to say. Uh, yes indeed, so, um, call out those, uh, folks that you've been thinking about in your heart, and it's okay to ask for something for yourself.
My family, um, you know, also wanna put Miss Sue in for speedy recovery, and, um, also, um, you know, in this area, we have, um, we can't come up with bikers out, um, you know, although things they do might not be what we approve of, but, um, just praying that they have, um, safety. For that, that they be safe and, you know, and then also the people around them, um, be safe.
Amen. Someone else?
Uh, well, I'd like to, uh, put out on the petition there, uh, teach Miss Carol and her husband still in the prayer, for healing, he making process, so that's good, and also put everyone that, that lost their loved one, put them in the press circle, and also put all the ones that's battling with sickness, with cancer and stuff, or put them in the press circle, and also like to put the leadership into the press circle, all leaders, and, 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 in the schools, and the churches, and, uh, white houses and everything, put them all up in, in, in the press circle, and also put the teenagers and the children that getting ready to get out of school with their tests and stuff, you know, put them all in the press circle. And also I like to put, you know, both, turn them in, in the press circle when it's coming up, I know it's coming at the end, but still, we put in there early for it be a success, but the protection of God, Holy Spirit be around it and in it, that everybody will be safe and sound as they travel to and for, and that God will travel them with his Holy Spirit.
Amen. Praying for, um, Stan and Dan and, uh, my nephew, Anthony, he just had open heart surgery, but God worked a miracle on him. So just continue to pray for his healing, and Miss Peggy, she failed, continue to pray for her heal.
Amen. Someone else?
I wanna pray for my family and, um, for, for them to draw closer to God and, um, deliverances, and, um, I wanna pray for, um, evangelism out here, us to preach the good news as the body of Christ. Everywhere we go, for the children, for this next generation, for the youth, for leadership, for the churches to rise up, the, um, Father's Cup overflow, and, and in general, the church in general, um, to rise, rise up and be who God's called them to be, and, um, and, um, I just, yeah, as you were saying, a personal prayer request for, um, me and Scott, God keeps like really opening a lot of doors lately for us, for the art out here in the marketplace, so, um, please, we, we're so slammed even this weekend, and, um, um, we just keep getting a lot of requests and open doors and for murals and, um, you know, different events and things, it's just keep opening up, so please pray because it is a tool when we go out there, but we also have many opportunities to pray for people and bring people to Christ. So it is evangelism as we go out there, so, please, please, um, be praying for this, this weekend, cause we, we're like slammed all weekend long.
And, and show God's love.
And to show God's love out there to people. Cause we, we deal with witches too, with, I mean, people that literally, um,
They got their signs.
Say that they're a witch.
They're not shy about it. We pray for them too.
We pray for the witches.
Oh, yes.
Amen. Someone else?
As for prayer, I would like to ask for prayer for, um, pastor, um, and all of our pastors at Father's Cup and pastors all over, um, the world, as we, um, minister to the needs of others, or as they minister and, and, uh, present God's word. Um, also for salvation, I'd like to pray for, ask for prayer for, um, my mother-in-law and, um, and my family, um, also for our children, um, would like to ask for prayer for a dear friend of ours, uh, Linda and Joe Stanley and their family, and the loss of her mom, or the passing of her mom. Um, continued prayers for, um, Kathy and, um, the passing of one of her dear friends, um, and just praying for people, and I think Sister Garnett said it earlier, that, that are grieving. Um, there's been a lot of deaths here recently, so we just pray for strength and for, um, covering and for God to just, um, just move.
Mercy, Lord.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else? All right, I would especially like to put the Jones family, oh, we just went to the funeral of their fourth sibling in as many months. Our family married into that family, so, and, um, we'll keep them in prayer. I'm sorry, and, and the Green family that just, uh, lost their, their mother, or the Moss family, or Goss family, I'm sorry, so, uh, keep those, those folks in, in prayer. Keep our leadership and our, um, and our government officials in prayer also. Um, let, let us, let us pause in prayer, Heavenly Father, we just thank you, God. We thank you, dear Lord, that we can come together, we thank you for the word, we thank you for all the prophets, all the writers, and especially the writer of the Holy Spirit, that left this word for us, uh, for food, for our, not only for our minds, but for our souls. Dear Lord, we just thank you that we're power walking, Father, um, that we're walking with Jesus and we're walking in the power of Jesus. Father, dear Lord, just let us understand, um, that the wisdom and even the chastisement, even the discipline is all so that we can walk circumspect. We don't talk a lot about it, Lord, but let us remember that we're to be holy because you're holy. And holy is sometimes a, a high word that folks try to use, but it's just means set apart. Uh, that we're used differently. For a different usage. And it's for, then, then our usage, of course, is for your glory, everything we should be working on is not for our comfort, but for your glory. So, Father, we thank you for, uh, sponsoring us, providing for us, giving us not only direction, but giving us tools to go in the direction. Not only, you know, that, dear God, you give us what we can, what the folks would say, the unction, or the desire, so let us keep your desires our desires, not our will, but your will. Father, if we do those things, dear Lord, if we do the things that you would like us to do, you will supply every need. But the need will be supplied according to your riches and glory.
Yes, Lord.
And you're sweeter than the honey in a honeycomb. And we get to see that sweetness when we're involved in your work and in your will. Father, we know that you're able to heal, we know that you're able to supply. We know that you're able to change the lives, we know that you're able to change relationships. We know that you're able to change families. We know that you're able to change states and communities and even nations, we know that you're able to change the entire world, because we're indeed world changers. So, Father, empower and equip us and inspire us, dear God, uh, to go and to do your will. Dear Lord, we thank you for the things that you have done. We thank you to, for the things you have given us to do, uh, because we have work to do also. Dear Lord, not only that, we thank you, dear Lord, that you said, it shall be done, and we thank you that you said it is done. We thank you, God. Dear Lord, we thank you for direction, um, and we just ask a restoration of all the teachers here. And Father, please don't let this be the end of the session of the lesson, but only, dear Lord, a primer, dear Lord, a primer, dear God, that we'll go and study ourselves to show ourselves a proof right for the dividing the word of truth or work when need not, need not be ashamed. And so, dear God, right now, just let us have a hunger for the word in our individual study, so when we come back, we'll have something to add. Dear Lord, now that you've done this, now that you already done it, dear Lord, we're going out to be witnesses now. Dear Lord, not only open our mind and our hearts to what, uh, you have given us, let us be bold to open our mouth, so that there's a testimony. All these things we ask and we receive right name, and right now, in the name of the Father, God, our Creator, in the name of the Son, Jesus Christ, our, our Redeemer, and in the name of the Great Teacher, the Holy Spirit. In Jesus' name we pray, and all the saints sat together, amen. It's good to see everybody on Bible Sunday tonight, thank y'all, thank y'all, we're, we're blessed by listening in on all, all of the wisdom that people are sharing, so thank y'all.
Amen.
Thank you.
Let the church say amen. Let the church say amen. So let the church say amen. Blessings.